Here.
Rogers.
Here.
Duckworth.
Here.
Uh, approval of minutes, the regular meeting of November twenty, two thousand seventeen.
Motion.
Second. Bulletin?
Yes.
Carte?
Uh, staying.
Rindberry?
Yes.
Grandson?
Yes.
Rogers?
Yes.
Duckworth?
I'm staying.
Um, the closed session minutes of November twenty, two thousand seventeen.
Motion.
Second. Bulletin?
Yes.
Carte?
Staying.
Rindberry?
Yes.
Grandson?
Yes.
Rogers?
Yes.
Duckworth?
I'm staying.
Okay, uh, next thing is approval of reports and bills.
Motion.
Bulletin?
Yes.
Carte?
Yes.
Rindberry?
Yes.
Grandson?
Yes.
Rogers?
Yes.
Duckworth?
Yes.
Okay, uh, under presentation, petitions, letters, and other communications. Just slide that out. Slide that out today.
No.
Okay, so we already got that done, the community leasing partners agreement. Um, one of the things I did, we did put out on your, uh, in front of you, is the draft copy of the audit. Yes, sir?
What's the, what's the, what's on here, community leasing partners agreement, what is that?
Um, I think we did that la- uh, last time. Didn't we do that, wasn't that the fire, there was a fire?
Fire fact, social media fact. Oh, to get the grant? Through leasing, no, through leasing, but.
And. Lawrence had to prove it, and that's what we're waiting on, his, his signature.
Okay.
Okay, uh, anyway, so, uh, uh, Vonda Davis has, um, has, uh, presented the draft copy of the audit, and then, uh, she's, she was, uh, out of office, uh, today and tomorrow, so Wednesday I'll be calling, talk, calling her, and ask her when she wants to present the final audit to us. Do you want, do you want to go ahead and tell about the fish kill that we got solved?
Yeah, we probably can.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, the, uh, the, uh, you remember the spill we had last year on the, uh, at, at, uh, near the, uh, lift station on the, uh, on the treatment, near the treatment plant? Uh, where we had a fish kill, uh, we've got that resolved with Department of Natural Resources, we haven't fi- signed the definitive agreements yet, but I made a counter offer, they made a counter proposal, I made one more counter offer, and, and we ended up with a total of about seventy?
Seven.
Seven thousand eight hundred, seven, seventy-eight hundred dollar.
I thought it was seven thousand, like, eighty-four dollars.
Yeah, maybe it is.
Okay.
Um, it's twenty-five hundred plus four thousand and ninety-six. I think that's what it is.
You saved us what, twenty-five hundred?
Saved me twenty-five hundred dollars.
Yeah, you saved us twenty-five hundred dollars.
Uh, no other terms, though, that's the big thing, usually with those, they'll have some provision for making some revisions to your plant, making revisions to your lines, nothing in this one, so that's, that's a good deal. Uh, they'll send a, an administrative order on consent, we'll have to approve that at some time down the road, just a little bit, but, uh, he said probably after the first of the year before we get that in, so.
I wish.
But we don't need, doing action now, correct?
No, no action, no action required.
All right, um, so that's out of the way, unfinished business? All right, under reports, the mayor's report. Let's see, uh, Jim Rosen hasn't had really any luck of late, and, uh, but our economic team has been working hard, and, um, our city councilor is working on a contract between the city and the arts council, since we did get a twenty-five thousand dollar grant. Um, now, how close are you to that?
Oh, close, I've got, uh, a little close.
You, you want to tell them a little bit of stuff, or not?
And, uh.
Okay, never mind.
I had the lease agreement drawn up, I think it's about the same place we were last time, I had a lease agreement drawn up, by the looks of the grant, it looks like a management agreement might be closer to what they're anticipating from that, so.
And the arts council met last week, and I told them that you, you were working on an agreement, and they'd like to meet and go over a agreement as a group, before it's presented to the city council.
Then, um, uh, Liberty Utilities, as you're aware, is getting ready to have or apply for a rate increase, have applied for a rate increase, and, uh, I will be, uh, attending that rate hea- rate hearing to oppose that, it's, uh, basically after you add the taxes and stuff, it's ten dollars a month, every single person, every single month, regardless whether you use any gas or not. Um, the brownfields, uh, everybody continues to work on that, the airport car, I guess how much is the coun- council willing to spend? Um, I've, I've been given a couple of possible solutions, maybe we should take bids, and, and somebody bids, say, hey, I've got a hundred thousand, a car with a hundred thousand miles on it, and I'll sell it to you for X amount of money, or a donation from a firm that has a larger fleet, maybe? Um, I don't know, but, uh, we, we did discuss once looking at, um, the, um, state, um, bid for u- like, used vehicles and stuff, but I don't know where we're at on that, but it's probably gon- it's, it's probably gonna be pretty expensive still. So, I, I, my question is, I guess, how much are we willing to spend for a car?
I thought, was, am I wrong, was Lady Luck or the casino not donating to it?
Well, what happened was, they were, and they, um, when they, they should've so- they should've donated it when it was Lady Luck, but they waited till it was, um, El Dorado, and when it changed to El Dorado, it went back on their books as a higher value than what it was, as well, they explained it to me. And so they didn't want to donate it now, so we just got, we're not gonna get the car from them at this point. So, anyway, so backstory, what we want to do about an airport car, well, how much are we willing to spend for one, I'm just looking for a ballpark? Cause I don't have any idea.
I'd say we say what the bids are for a small.
You want to take bids, a hundred thousand, you like that idea?
I mean, what's the state bid on a small, well, who has the state bid, do we know who has the state bid on small, um, compact vehicles, or?
Are, are you talking about a, a state bid for a small one?
Who has, who has the state bid, do we know?
Uh, there's two different companies that have, that have, uh, vehicles under state bid, that's kind of what, what camp, brand of vehicle you want.
But are we looking, do you want, what kind, do you want a minivan, do you want a small economic car, what are we thinking?
Small and cheap.
But, small and cheap, minivan or small and cheap economic car?
Um, I would, I would say, uh, just a regular compact car, not a van. That'd just be my thought, but, uh.
Can we say who has the state bids out there?
Sure.
Putting them, and then who do you buy from? Is that who you're buying?
Missouri Highway Patrol has jobs of cars there, but they got some charge, nobody, uh, the.
The motor, we don't want those, cause the motor.
But they have, they're balanced, too.
But how much money?
I don't know, I'll check.
Can we get some numbers?
I think we have a, a small SUV, there's about ten more.
Okay, so, uh, I'll look into that for you, okay, the Cornell property, sir? That you?
I thought I was done with the Cornell property.
Are you?
We've got, it's all ready to go, all you gotta do is put it out for bidding.
So what are we waiting on?
Uh, I think the timeframe is, is, uh, expired for the appeal.
Has expired? Okay, so, just get on it.
Good to go.
So we need to bid, uh?
You need to get, uh, bid, I guess, for, for demolition, or the city can tear it down itself, I think it's done that in the past, so. However, y'all, we're going to do it.
Is it safe for, city for it to tear it down?
I don't know.
Well, maybe we'll find out what we can do with the stuff first.
Yeah.
Yes.
That might be a good idea.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. Don't want to bite off more than we can chew.
So we probably need to do it, we need, can we have something by the next meeting, so we can try to get it done pretty quick?
All right, so, um, on the, uh, Missouri economic development, as you know, the Marler project is, uh, is, uh, getting ready to begin, and, um, it should be in, end, uh, early April, uh, and if you don't know, that, remember, this is a one-mile-long, ten-inch line that replaces a number of four-inch lines. Uh, now, Republic, just, uh, a notice of, uh, they are gonna be closed on, will not pick up trash on, uh, Christmas or New Year's, and so that means your trash is on, on, pick up us on Monday, it's gonna be on Tuesday, and so on, so on, so on, until then Friday, trash pickup will be on Saturday. On Industrial Drive, um, Amarin's provide, as I've told you, Amarin's providing five lots without charge, and they should be up in two weeks. Uh, Moreland Drive, uh, Waters and Associates is doing an engineering study on that. Uh, the Marler sidewalks, Missy Dell's working on a sidewalk grant with MODOT, and she told me that that's not gonna be available until two thousand or eighteen, the early part. Uh, the rec center roof, we, uh, did advertise in the newspaper for bid slash proposals to fix the roof, and that'll be into, uh, in Wednesday's paper. Uh, land costs, uh, Bobby Curry, uh, contracted with the city to do an appraisal of all these lots, actually, it's, uh, one of the four different appraisals for six hundred dollars, and we really appreciate Bobby Curry's community mindedness, and the appraisals are complete, but I do not have them in my hand. And I hate to guess what the amount was. Um, the drainage project on Carroll to near Ward is complete, and it was six hundred and eighty-three feet, and then the Bell area is fourteen hundred and sixty feet, and anticipated, uh, completion date is before two thousand and eighteen, by the end of the month, in other words. Um, the cemetery mapping, there's an ad in the paper, um, for requests for qualifications, and to my knowledge, um, I know for, I'm relatively sure that two are going to submit, uh, RFQ. Um, opening and closing of graves, uh, bids are advertised in the newspaper. Uh, Exit Six, uh, one fifty-five at South Ward, um, I still, I still like the idea of, of, of Riggs Lawn Service mowing that when it begins in April, and taking care of that, um, and our first, the fiscal year will be about twelve or fourteen mowings, according, is that right? All right, all together, that's all together, isn't it, twelve or fourteen, isn't it? Okay, so about half that many for, um, for the fiscal year. So, I'm still looking for that, but of course, we got some time. Uh, personally, I think that Exit Three should be MODOT and the Pim Scott County Commission's responsibility. Um, East Twentieth Street, we, we received RFQs from three engineering firms to, uh, repave, uh, East Twentieth. Uh, that's, uh, and that, we need to start that process probably in February of two thousand and eighteen, it takes a while. Uh, Light Up Crowsville, um, Amarin, we now have six hundred and ten CB lights, and we have, and as far as LED, we've got a hundred and thirty-seven, which is twenty-two point, twenty-two and a half percent to our goal, and, um, I, uh, have sent, uh, a, uh, request for different lights that are burnt out in England and French parks, and our, uh, Christmas and, uh, New Year's, the city office will be closed, which is coming up on us quick. You got any questions about the mayor's report? Yes, ma'am?
We have a cemetery mapping request for qualifications, what is qualifications?
Say it again, which one?
Cemetery mapping?
Oh, the cemetery mapping is a professional service?
But I mean, what is qualifications, request?
Uh, they, well, there's like five.
That's the process in Missouri for, for, uh, for selecting an e- engineering firm, or a land surveying firm, or, or a, uh, or an architect, so.
Oh.
So, so it's a professional services, request for, request for proposals and qualification, their qualifications, they send in qualifications, you look at the qualifications, and you select the firm that, that, uh, you think best, uh, best suits your needs for the, for the project, and then you negotiate the price with that firm. So it's a little different than a bid process, but it's, it's, it's similar to a bid process.
Do we get a percentage?
Um, no, it, it depends on, it, it could be, uh, it could be.
It'd be a flat amount, or it could be a percentage.
Yeah.
But, but that's not a part of the RFQ, though, that you just select somebody. All right, okay, next is.
That's an acronym, yeah.
Okay, police?
Only thing I have is, you know, Doug asked, I think it was last council meeting or the one before, about, uh, do we have somebody to come out with the churches for the church, an active shooter, which I think Jerry may have got with you on that, they're gonna train with him, and any other churches that need it done, get with Jerry Hudson, he's qualified to do that, so, just get with him and come up through it with the churches, we talked about it earlier.
Okay, fire?
Okay, I do have a fire report from Chief John Jones, uh, with the fire listings from November twenty-second to December fourth. On, uh, eleven twenty-two, there was at Seventh and Chaffin Drive, former SEMO trailer courts, shed on fire, the fire responded to, on the twenty-fourth, uh, they responded to a smoke scare at four hundred Laurent, I think that's apartment A, it's in A here. On the twenty-fifth, there were two calls, one twelve-point-eight mile mark on I fifty-five with a grass fire on the median, and it says twelve point, at point four, two, uh, same thing, grass fire on the median. On the twenty-sixth, State Highway one sixty-four, two miles west of, uh, Route D, there was a grass fire in the Ditzbank, and that the fire responded to, on twelve-two, uh, on Route U, three miles west of the city, a vehicle accident, there was one injury, one airlift to Memphis, and then also on the second, at I one fifty-five and four twelve at the nine, Mount Mark or eastbound, there was a small grass fire. Uh, Chief also, uh, informed us that there were ten new MSA G-one self-contained breathing apparatus units arrived on Monday, on the twenty-seventh. Uh, they had two representatives from the Sentinel, Sen- uh, Seneca, Sentinel Fire Equipment Company, and they were here to demonstrate the new units, and all the personnel present were showing how to use them, and they were fit tested on using the new air mask. Anything else, Chief? Okay, that's all the fire department.
Thank you, okay, um, and, uh, Terry's, uh, absent today, so do you have a report for me?
I do. Um, other than the day-to-day operations, the street crew has finished putting up the Christmas lights and decorated the light poles, putting up the wreaths on the utility poles and decorations outside of City Hall, uh, they continue to pick up leaves, limb, and junk debris. Repairs, uh, that were needed were made to the street sweeper, and it was put back in operation on November twenty-first, and has been running the street sweeper every twenty days since. ERB equipment was here on November twenty-eighth to perform the two-thousand-hour service maintenance on the backhoe. They returned on November thirtieth to complete the service maintenance and to replace a bad idler arm and pulley and a bad belt. Um, contact was made with Republic to have some corrections made for some of the dumpsters, uh, five dumpsters were picked up and the business names were corrected. Uh, list of streetlights that are or were out were turned into Amarin Electric on December first. Uh, it looks, it appears that Terry was called out to the four-hundred block on East Eleventh for the smell of sewer coming from the stormwater drains. After checking this, he called the wastewater supervisor, Paul Shaw, and Eric Tillman, who came out to the four-hundred block of East Eleventh to help check this problem out. The problem was found and corrections were being made, or had been made. He also called for the backhoe and the dump truck to come over to Eastwood, where they swept out part of the ditch containing some sewer. Um, the manhole on East Nineteenth has been replaced, and the contractors in the process of repairing the street at the intersection of East Nineteenth and Brown. On West Nineteenth, pro- the drainage project, all the drainage pipes and boxes have been installed, and most of the driveways that were cut out have been replaced, both street brakes have been replaced, a lot of the dirt work is being completed, there'll be some settling of the dirt that will require more work. As far as, uh, East Twentieth, the Seacoal project, uh, contractor's getting started on that. Over on East Ninth, the drainage project should be started soon, the drain pipes are here, and they're located near the project side. Uh, as far as building inspections, there are three homes were inspected, and, uh, they were going back over for, after repairs were made, two electrical inspections, two building permits have been completed. Out at the airport, the windsock was replaced on the south end, uh, the light on top of the windsock had to be taken off for repairs, they'll get that done as soon as the park comes in. An inspection was conducted of the new PAPI and the runr- runway lights, all the lights are okay, and there are four lights that need bulbs and two lights that need to be repaired, not quite sure what he meant there. A visual inspection was conducted on the fuel system and the overflow arm, the fuel system looks to be okay, and the over- overflow arm as well. Card reader system is still down, however, the new computer is in, and as you spoke to earlier, there's been no luck on currency card.
Thank you. Code enforcement.
Uh, my report would be a whole lot shorter, um, just during the last week or so, nine letters were mailed out to evade nuisance. I'm working currently on three of them, um, the time has run out, so I'm trying to get them to evade the nuisance before I have to give them a citation. Um, the city has worked on two, two recent properties to evade nuisance on letters that I sent out. Um, I'm surveying a couple of properties now, and talking to different, um, different residents, and I'll see if I can make this public, especially since the leaves are going off the tree, to see if we could collectively, as residents, try to clean up our alleys, you know, um, working on that, um. We still have, I'm sure, that Will Volunteer with us, she's on a part-time basis, so that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you, partner.
Okay, and, uh, we don't have a cemetery report, cause we haven't met lately, and, uh, but we'll be meeting soon, um, Parks and Rec?
Um, right now, kickball is, uh, underway, and, uh, we're doing basketball signups, they started last Thursday, Friday, last Friday, uh, basketball signups. Um, I got one question about, there's a, a guy, a person that represents SEMO Community Services, and he does probation hearings and the armory, he's been charged two hundred dollars a month, I told him he's there every Thursday from one to three. Um, I told him that, you know, his rate probably wouldn't be going up, um, he is providing a service, uh, for people on probation, paying their fees, getting their driver's license back, trying to put their lives back together. I don't know if you want to charge him three hundred dollars every time he walks in the door, uh.
Why, why, stop for a second, why do you assume his rate's going up, where'd that come from?
Well, we've had a deal about people using the armory, so.
No, but, okay, no, we're not helping out that deal, we're helping about this guy that rents it monthly now, and has been paying two hundred dollars a month, why is that gonna affect, what has happened?
I, do I need to tell him, I was unaware.
Oh.
That, that he was using.
But he is paying.
Yes, he is paying.
So why are we gonna discount him and charge him more for paying?
I was, uh, discount him and charge him.
I mean, why are we charging more for paying?
I just wanted to pay him bucks, that's what I was told to do, it's just I didn't want.
He didn't know if it was, whether or not he should be charged three hundred or not, that's what I'm.
Yeah, but that's three hundred is the rental fee, right? Yeah.
Right, it's different, it's different, it's different.
Yeah.
To my knowledge, Park Board never discussed that.
Yeah, he's just using an office, I think.
Yeah, he has an office in there, two hundred dollars a month, and he's been there a number of years.
Several years, yeah.
Six, six years, he said, and, you know, but residents have to go somewhere else if he went there, so, I'm trying to keep him.
I think we're fine with two hundred.
Yeah, I think just continue on with it, I think the other was more of an event type, uh, deal, renovation.
Just making sure we're working.
Thank you, you got any more?
You're good, yeah.
The pool's down, uh, pool broke today, it's, uh, out of commission, I got Keith's pools coming Wednesday, says they can fix it, but, you know, no water circulating, so no chemicals are getting put through the pool to rip it sanitize, so it's shut down until I can get, uh, water regulated through it, and, uh, the chemicals going. Should be fixed Wednesday, probably Thursday, I don't know.
How long you anticipate it being down?
Thursday. That's all I got.
Okay. Budget, you done, are you done? Wes, you finished?
I'm done, man.
Budget, do you have anything to show? Library?
We started Christmas storytime last week, Mrs. Dicky Durante was our reader, it will continue tomorrow night with Ms. Janet Meredith as our reader this week. Next week will be Mrs. Santa, um, I would say her name, because she's Mrs. Santa, and then the last week, we are going to have Santa and somebody else reading, and I can't believe I blew that person's, but anyway, it'd be a good reading. I'll tell you at the next council meeting, but it is, I'll have time then. Also, we're gonna have, through the Arts Council, Council, the Saint Louis Repertory Theater there on the fourteenth, presenting the Nutcracker. We have tickets for sale now, reserved seats are three dollars, or five dollars, and the general admission is three dollars. So you can purchase your tickets at the library, if you're interested in seeing that, it's at six-thirty on the fourteenth. Also, later this week, I'll be attending the Missouri Public Library Directors Meeting, of which I am president, so I'll be giving a lot of geography lessons about where brothers can read.
Thank you.
Bye.
Uh, water, sir?
Uh, we replaced the, the meter for Walker Terrace, uh, did sewer tap today for, on Park, West Park, we. Pretty much, we, one, one thing we need to ask for, the, uh, the project on Twentieth Street. When they got in and started looking, there's another break on Marler than what we had already planned for, so we got a, a change order from John for the next twenty-five feet, and amount of eight thousand seven hundred ninety dollars.
What about our, uh, claim for our cyber attack last year?
We'll meet for Mark Wednesday.
Pardon me?
I'll meet for Mark Wednesday, I'm going to.
Okay.
And they, they poured concrete, Terry said they were working on the street, they, they did pour the concrete today, on, uh, Mr. Spicer's house, so that takes about a week for that to dry out, so that.
Okay.
Well, we're paying for that, our sales tax.
Oh, they got the sewer extension.
Sewer extension, anything else, yeah? Yeah, I was gonna look at that and see what we could add to the party.
We, we've had, years ago, there was another break, but it's, and it's still, it's starting to sag now, that's why, what we're doing with this, we go manhole, manhole, and that, all that old pipe will be gone, that has been repaired since.
Did we do a budget amendment to do that, or was it originally?
I think, I think Terry asked for a budget amendment, I think it's been meetings ago. Well, sir, so.
Do you remember, Terry, once, cause I can't remember, I'm talking, oh, yeah.
Did you have insurance guy ever call you?
No, no.
I'll go back and look, but we did praise the project.
It, it was done when, when the ninth street, the eighth street project was done, it was the same unit as that.
Well, if they're in there and they're doing it, we, we gotta get it correct, so.
That's just, I don't know.
So you're just wanting a change order for eight thousand seven hundred dollars?
It's a ninety-dollar shift.
Motion.
Bulletin?
Yes.
Carte?
Yes.
Rindberry?
Yes.
Uh, grandson?
Yes.
Rogers?
Yes.
Duckworth?
Yes.
Okay, insurance?
Uh, I worked with Mark to get, uh, all the renewal information for, uh, the city's mold firm policy that comes up at the end of the year, uh, that has been submitted. I checked with him today, he doesn't have the real bank yet, but he expects that at any time, uh, so just wait on that to come back. Um, I've gotten a couple of calls from the representative from Colonial Life, and I think he's, uh, signed up six employees while he was here, and.
No, it's only three.
Pardon me?
Three.
Three, and he was concerned because those policies start changing, are December first, and, um, I don't know if it's been okay for those payroll deductions to come out or not, and I just wanted some clarification for it, are we okay with that?
Uh, yes, yeah.
Okay. That's all I have.
And all that, so, all that Colonial Life issue is all resolved?
It is, we're just gonna have to work through it pretty much, we'd already, he'd already made the offers to the employees, employees had already accepted offers with respect to it, we'd give them the go-ahead for him to come in and, uh, and do it, uh. Uh, we, what it'll have to do, it'll, it'll mesh in with the, and there'll be one, one section one twenty-five plan and both will have to work under that plan, is the way it'll work, so. Uh, he has given assurances that Colonial Life will file the, um, uh, Form fifty-five hundred.
We won't have to pay for that.
Yeah, that's, that's.
So there shouldn't be any additional calls for the city?
There shouldn't be any additional calls for the city.
Keep your fingers crossed.
Yeah.
Okay, um, new business? Yes, sir. Well, you're a business from the floor, actually, but I'll, I'll get you one minute, okay? One second. Now, business from the floor, go ahead. Say your name, sir.
Uh, Donald Griffiths. Uh, one, is this meeting being recorded because I don't see the usual? I don't see the usual cameras here. Is this meeting being recorded? Uh, okay, thank you. Uh, number two, in reference to the cemetery program. It has been stated that H and F Smith gives the, was a plat in the lot, the lot, and that's it. Uh, from personal experience, I know that they do more than that. Uh, I, they even took me out there to the gravesites of my stepfamily. They drove me out there from one to another. Uh, as far as genealogy is concerned, I obtained a copy of the records of all of my stepfamily that's buried out there. It told me not only who they were, where they died, including out of state, what they died of, uh, where the funeral was held, who, what Reverend officiated the funeral, who the pallbearers were, who played the organ, who sung the hymns. So I got a lot of information. So I just wanted to clarify that. We get a lot more than just legal limitations.
I, I don't think anybody in your speech said it at all.
Okay.
Uh, there is a, there is a, another cemetery program that's public, it's called Findaggrave.com. And it's real easy to use and there's literally millions of graves in it. You just put down, you know, what country? What state? What county? And, uh, what, you know, and it, it'll find it, uh, even, if it's a last name that's odd, Smith won't work, but anyways, if it's odd, you know, then you can, you can pull them up pretty easily, not a whole lot of trouble. It's just, it's Findaggrave.com, really easy. It'll tell you where they're buried and it'll have, it has, uh, a lot of times has obituaries and who all is kin to who and all kinds of stuff like that, it's pretty neat. Okay, um, any other, any, sir?
Uh, I'd like to bring a little city's, uh, awareness. On November thirtieth, the, uh, local Salvation Army started its, uh, uh, annual bell ringing campaign. We are in need of volunteers for bell ringing with, uh, you, your organization. We normally have law enforcement, uh, civic organizations, churches and business as, uh, participants during this season. We will be ringing, we started November thirtieth. I think the last day's schedule will be, uh, December twenty-third. If anybody, we're a little short with, uh, volunteers this time. And if you are interested to get with me, I can give you, uh, my number or you can let me know if you, or your church or organization or whatever's interested in helping us. Uh, we've done it on weekends, but if we can get enough people, I would like to try and have some bell ringing going on as many days in December as possible. Uh, we have a, not an astronomical goal set as far as what we're trying to obtain this year, about seventy-five hundred dollars. We've been doing about that much every year. And for those that wanna know, uh, eighty-five percent of the money's raised, stay right here in Pembroke County. It's not just for Corruggeville, but we service all the areas of Pembroke County and we've got records and documentation of people we've helped. Uh, right now, the thing that has kinda, kinda knocked us off track is that we don't have Walmart as a place we used to, was one of our major places. But right now, we're scheduled to ring whenever we have people at Hayes and Corruggeville and Hayes and Haytown. Uh, the Dollar General will not give us permission because of some corporate, they don't wanna do it. So we are limited to where we can actually ring, but I wanted to let the community know, we would appreciate any volunteers that we can get. You can see me and I'll give you numbers to call and make sure we put you on the schedule and when.
Is there a business immediately or adjacent to Dollar General?
Yeah, um, Sabalot.
Sabalot, so would Sabalot allow it?
I'd have to look into it. I'm not the person that actually finds out what I can find out.
Because I was thinking if Sabalot allowed it.
That's a good point.
Then you just set the bell ringer up right next to Sabalot, right next door.
Well, there's a, there's a business between them. There's a Sherman Williams right in there, it's not on the same property.
Is there a certain hours that we need to schedule, you need to work a certain hours?
Okay, the hours that we normally ring have been in the past, we try to start as early as nine AM and work until dark. Uh, I hadn't wanted to put too many people out there after dark, but, uh, we normally range in the area between nine AM and say four, four-thirty PM. And people that are on our Salvation Army board and the, uh, our staff, uh, on a daily basis, they come out and collect, uh, whatever was put in the, in the kettles on those days. We're gonna also be putting out, uh, some countertop kettles in various businesses, uh, some of the other board members will probably be contacting, uh, businesses around the area to see where we can place them. And they look small, kettles, not so big, but they have locks on them and on the countertops in the local stores where we will be allowed and people can still get that way, even when we're not out there ringing. But, uh, we'd appreciate any help from the community we can get.
Thank you. Any other business from the floor? Yes?
Uh, I'm Jana Meredith, I'm co-chairman of the Public Area Arts Council for some years. And this is just something that just, I just would like it noted with the grant that was received with the city that is working with the Arts Council. Arts Council was never consulted, we know nothing about this grant and we need to get with you councilors.
Okay.
See how we're tied to it.
Okay.
Cause we're aware.
Alright.
So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, introduction bills, none, okay? And, uh, uh, any motion for a closed session? And Lawrence needs to get down to steel and has to be there by six. You're gonna make it if we have an adjournment.
Motion adjourn second.
All those in favor? opposed?